Instructions for accessing subtitles in a language other than English are included on our board meetings webpage as well as in the description below. Instrucciones para acceder a los subtítulos en un idioma que no sea el inglés se incluyen en nuestra página web de reuniones de la junta así como en la descripción a continuación.
Good evening. It is Wednesday, October 12th. At 5 o'clock, this is the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, again for Wednesday, October 12th. I'm calling the meeting to order at 5 o'clock. And our first order of business is to go into closed session. We have one item in closed session, which is conference with real property negotiators for 199 Portius Avenue. So I will now recess us into closed session. There is no public currently here in our room to have any comments on closed session, so we don't have any public comment on closed session. In which case, I can go ahead and recess us into closed session at 5:01. Alright, hello everyone and welcome. This is Wednesday, October 12th, and it is 6:30 PM. And I am calling us back to reconvene in open session after our closed session. This is the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. And I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you all so much for coming. As we get started with our meeting, I wanted to just acknowledge that we are all here, all of the trustees are present, and we're here in this multipurpose room today. And as we are meeting here in this space, and we're gathered at the Wade Thomas Multipurpose Room, so before moving on, I'd like to just acknowledge that here in this room, we're located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin and southern Sonoma Counties. And that we honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. Part of our start for every meeting is procedural items. And before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, I just wanted to acknowledge that, as I do most meetings, before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, just take a minute to make an acknowledgement and have a reflection on civic engagement and democracy before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, to infuse that pledge with some meaning to it. And tonight, what I was thinking about was gratitude and appreciation, which many of you are going to understand why with our agenda item tonight. Gratitude and appreciation for what we all bring together, and the service that everyone contributes to our community. And that education is such an important cornerstone of our democracy, and part of our civic engagement and our civic life in our community. It is a hub of our community, and it is really important. And so, the service that we all contribute to the education of our children and engaging in our community. And so, in saying of the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, that's what I'm reflecting on, is gratitude and appreciation for the civic service that many of you in this room have contributed over the many years to our education. So, with that, we will now do our procedural item C1, the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand with me as you're able for the pledge.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The second procedural item that we have at every meeting is the adoption of the agenda and the time allocations. So I will look at my colleagues to see if anyone has any questions or amendment to the current agenda as posted. Anyone?
No question. I make a motion to adopt the agenda such as stated.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, so we will vote on the agenda. Marie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
And Shelley, aye. Alright, we have adopted our agenda and time allocations, and we can move on to item number D, which is staff recognition.
Sorry, gotta turn my microphone on.
Okay. Well, we are so excited for this agenda item this evening. This is something we look forward to every year, because the Ross Valley School District is the amazing district that it is because of our employees. And so, tonight is about recognizing those who have made the decision to join our district, and those who have continued to stay within our district, and all that they bring to our district. We are deeply, deeply appreciative. And so, our district leaders will be introducing the employees that work with them at each of their facilities or departments. And we're going to go ahead and get ourselves started with our newly tenured employees. And that starts with White Hill. It might be best to have principals stand up and, yeah. Do you want to come to the mic here? Does that work? Alrighty.
Okay. So the first newly tenured teacher, we have a PE teacher, Mark Parnow.
Great. And we have our music teacher, Malik Charles Wade the First.
Alright, and I have the next person. So, when you're an administrator in the district, you don't reach tenure as an administrator, but you do reach tenure as a certificated employee. So that one person on our administrative team is Eric Sable, our Director of Student Service.
Alright, and our next category is new hires for certificated management. And that's me again, and I'm not going to stand because my microphone doesn't go that high, but they're still standing. Yay! John Baker and Mary Claire Mullin. Thank you so much for joining us this year as our co-principals at White Hill. Alright, and our newly, our new hires in the area of certificated employees.
Need a stepstool. So, we have, there, I don't think either of them are here tonight, but we have Tammy Harper, who's teaching a second grade combination class at Brookside, and then Sammy Hunley, who teaches fourth grade at Brookside. We're happy they've joined us.
Alrighty. Hidden Valley has three new certificated employees, one of whom is here tonight, Cindy Credo, our TK teacher. Alina Miha, our Hidden Valley Early Intervention Speech Specialist, and then Katie Saunders, a fourth grade teacher.
Okay, at Manor, we have one new hire. Beth Berlin Stevens is our ELL teacher. She couldn't be here tonight.
And at Wade Thomas, we have two new hires, Elise Holland, who's sitting back here in fourth grade. And Mary Ann Scrivenich in fifth grade, who's not here this evening.
Alright, so at White Hill, we have a new math teacher, Jamie Evans, right here. We also have a new special education teacher, Susan Gallagher.
We have a new sixth grade math and science teacher, Brianna Hatfield. And a new school psychologist, Alicia Solis.
Okay, and then we also have a new music teacher, who's also at Wade Thomas, Amanda Hahn. And then I'm sharing a district-wide hire, our K5 social worker, Ms. Janet Mercer, who's serving all four elementary schools. What's up? Yeah!
Alright, and we have one new hire in the area of classified management.
And that belongs to Ms. Maureen Erickson, occupational therapist, and she's working right here at Wade Thomas, at Brookside, and also at White Hill. Welcome, Maureen.
Alright, and next up, our new hires for our classified employees.
So at Brookside, we have Emily DeGrassi, who is an instructional aide and campus supervisor. We have Pat King, who's here tonight, our new library specialist.
Rebecca Knapp, who's a one-to-one aide at Brookside. She's not here tonight. And Allison Rowan, who is an instructional aide, a TK instructional aide and campus supervisor at Brookside.
At Hidden Valley, we have three new classified employees, all of whom are Hidden Valley parents, two of whom's kids graduated, but they did not. Jennifer Isa Virdens, Melissa Walleridge, and Lori Stuckey. Thank you.
Okay, at Manor, we have two new classified staff, Tahareh Tilcock, who's a one-on-one. And Laura Jordan joined us last May as our administrative assistant.
And at Wade Thomas, we have Megan Brown, who is our TK instructional aide.
Alright, at White Hill, our new classified employees, first one is, we have three, first one is Victoria Durantz.
We have with us this evening, Shreya La Roche.
And we have Roshana Ostwari.
And then we also have a couple that started last year as well, and I get the honor of introducing Dez McKissok.
And...
Alright, well, welcome to Ross Valley, and we hope that you will be back here for lots of milestones in the years to come. So maybe a round of applause for everyone. So the, the next areas of recognition are for those who have reached milestones in terms of their years of service, and we'll start with five years of service.
Honoring a fifth-year employee who's not here, but Kathleen Wolf, kindergarten teacher.
And Rachel Zalis, who's our resource specialist here at Wade Thomas, not here this evening, but we're very grateful.
Honoring five years of service, a great math teacher at White Hill, he's not here, Jonathan Wilson.
And ten years.
Exactly. I'm glad I wore my sneakers tonight. We have, for ten years of service at Brookside and Hidden Valley, Jasmine Govan, who teaches art.
Ten lovely years with Shelley Skelton. First grade teacher. And ten amazing years with Principal Christie Fish at Hidden Valley.
And we also have with fifteen years, Rebecca Hayhurst, TKK teacher at Brookside.
And twenty years? Okay, amazing twenty years with Ms. Diane Viducci, speech and language. And also our third grade teacher, Liz Cole. And at thirty years, we have the fabulous Marcy Trahan, superintendent.
I would not have made it without all of you. I am so excited about continuing in Ross Valley, being in Ross Valley. This is my home. I love it here. I love everything about what we do for our children, and what we're going to continue doing to ensure that we meet our district priorities of continuing and bettering ourselves around racial equity, and improving what we do and offer for children around the multi-tiered systems of support, so that they get everything that they need to be their best selves and have their best future ahead of them. And then, of course, with that is our health and safety that we promote and we want to strive for, and it's not just the physical health and safety, but it's also social, emotional, and the academic growth of everybody. And then, of course, the underpinning of everything we do in this district would not be, what we're, we're not able to do at all if we don't remain fiscally solvent. And so, that kind of is the underpinning of what we strive and what we work on to ensure that we can do the amazing and great things. So, I want to thank you all for being on this journey with me to being the best school district ever. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Marcy. We, we all know that Ross Valley is much better, and just in a wonderful place because of you, and appreciate so much your leadership, which is unwavering. So, thank you. And milestones for our classified staff. So at five years.
Five years of service, we have Toto Dumay, who is our custodian at Brookside, and then Alex... Sorry, Toto, I didn't see you come in. And Alex Madero, who's a building manager at Brookside, also five years.
At Manor, we have Heather Wyndham, who is an instructional aide, five years.
And the Hidden Valley maintenance guys, Osmine Delgado and Bob Gampanini, both fifteen years. Nice. Thank you.
All good.
For ten years of service, we have with us this evening, Cecilia Woods.
And fifteen years of service, our most marvelous Mustang is Marlena Kennelworth, right here. Administrative assistant.
Also fifteen years of service, Patty Diaz, who is an instructional aide, a lunch, she serves our lunch, and she also helps out in the office.
And last, but certainly not least, is twenty years, and that is Lindsay Crawford at the district office, and unfortunately, Lindsay was not able to make it this evening, but we're very happy that she's with us.
Alright, I think we gather for a photo now? Yes?
Yes, we get to celebrate, and let's have a little bite and a drink, and just want to thank you all again so much, especially for coming out tonight. We know it's a big ask, especially when it's around dinnertime, and you have families at home, or you have things that you're doing to get ready for the next school day, so really appreciate that you're able to make it back tonight, and some of you had to drive too. So thank you very much for being here with us this evening, and most importantly, for being here with us each and every day to do everything that you do on behalf of all of our students.
Alright, we will take a recess from the meeting, and do a photo op, and have some refreshments, so we are hereby in recess. Alright, we are coming out of that short recess. It is, it's 7:10, so we're going to come out of recess and come back into our open session. We are, Eric is providing interpretation this evening, so if we have anyone who would like to have interpretation, we do have our headsets again this evening. Alright, we are in open session and going to move on to item E, communication, and reporting out from closed, starting with report out from closed session, there is nothing to report out from our closed session. This is the moment where we open the floor for public comment regarding items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if there's anybody here who has something that they would like to say for public comment of non-agenda items? Alright, we're not seeing any non-agenda item. And we'll move on to board announcements. So are there any, any board announcements, any announcements from the board? Again, these aren't the committees, we'll do that later, but this is any kind of announcements. Rachel?
Yes, so I went to the White Hill Middle School Welcome Family BBQ that they had on Friday, which was a lot of fun. There was a lot of people there, and they had brought in food trucks, and I guess there's, one of the vendors that was there was a family that runs Amy's Drive-Thru, so there was a bunch of things there, and it was great. There's live music, and it was fun. And then I also went to the Brookside Move-A-Thon, and that was, it was really kind of magical. They had had a bubble tower set up, and so the children were literally running through, like, just walls of walls of bubbles, and it was really, it was fun, and it was sweet, and it was, they were all moving and having a good time, so it was really good to watch.
Thanks. Are there any other? Nope, no other board announcements. Alright, last one is correspondence and communication to the board. We had one communication to the board, was there anything else that came in?
No, nothing after the agenda was, sorry, one came in after the agenda was posted, then after 3 o'clock today. Okay. Well, any that come in after 3 o'clock today, we'll post on the next board meeting in November.
Alright, so now we are on to item number F, which is our presentation and action item. This is the, the first item on our agenda in this area, is the overview of the 7-Eleven Facility Advisory Process and Committee. And again, I'm just going to let everyone know how the process runs in our board meetings. We are going to, again, our board meetings are meetings of the board, these are our business meetings, to address the items on our agenda and to take care of the board business, and we do it in public, so that we have transparency to the board business that we have. And we take public comment, so that we not only hear from each other in terms of making decisions, but then we also hear public comment. And again, a business meeting, a little bit different than a town hall meeting, where this is our board business, and then we will take public comment. So what we're going to do is, we're going to have, we'll have a presentation first, we'll have some discussion up here at the board, clarification questions, and some initial questions about the presentation. We will then go out for public comment, and hear the public comment, and then we will bring it back to the board for any further conversation that we need to have, and also to see if, if we do take action, we do have some action items here this evening, so then we will take action when we bring it back to the board. So that's the way it goes. And Marcy, if you want to go ahead and start us off with item number one, which is an overview of the 7-Eleven Facility Advisory Process and Committee.
Alright, great, thank you. And so at last Monday's, October 3rd, special board meeting, the board approved the resolution authorizing the 7-Eleven process, and tonight's agenda item is to provide an overview discussion and recommended approval of a scope of work with our existing legal counsel, Atkinson, Anderson, Lawyer, Rude, and Romo, AALRR, for short, for time and materials up to a maximum of $44,000 to manage the 7-Eleven facilities advisory process. And here tonight with us is Bryce Chastain from AALRR, to provide an overview, and if approved, his management and facilitation of the process in accordance with Education Code 17388. And so, Bryce, I think we have a PowerPoint that we were able to send over, so we put that up here.
And there it is.
There it is.
Okay. Alright, so a little introduction, I'm Bryce Chastain, I'm a partner with Atkinson, Anderson. I've been with the firm for fifteen years, I've been practicing law for 22 years, construction throughout, and school and college facilities matters, including real property, 7-Eleven committees. I understand that the district wants to go through or evaluate going through the process now. There's at least one property the district wants evaluated, possibly more, and so, I'll explain this legally required process that you have to go through. So first, we start off with the 17387 is the first statute, it expresses the legislative intent, and it is into the intent of the legislature, and I can paraphrase, that the community has to be involved in making decisions about whether unused school property is indeed surplus, and if it's surplus, what would be appropriate uses for it. And again, as it sums up with assuring building use that is compatible with the community's needs and desires. To further that, the board appoints a committee, the so-called 7-Eleven Committee, and I'll get to why it's called that in a minute, to advise the governing board in the development of district-wide policies and procedures governing the use or disposition of school buildings or space in school buildings, which is not needed for school purposes. And to do that, go through this mandatory process, it's mandatory before you sell these properties or enter into leases beyond 30 days. You set up this committee, and it has between seven and 11 members, and they have to be from specific groups, and those include at least seven but no more than 11 members representing these groups to reflect the whole community, and we want to have individuals on this committee who represent the ethnic, age group, and socioeconomic composition of the district. So that's a broad mandate. The question comes up often, between seven and 11, how does it usually wind up, and what do you recommend? We usually are on the high side, because you want to be sure that you are representative, and sometimes you need more people to be able to do that adequately, and reflect the whole community. You have to have at least someone who will represent the business community within the district, someone to represent landowners or renters. The statute says landowners or renters, it's not the worst idea to represent each landowner and renters, because within your community, these, these can be different perspectives and have different interests. Teachers, we have to have a teacher representative. Administrators within the district have to have an administration representative. Parents of students, we have to have at least a parent to speak for that, that crucial constituency. And we have to have persons with expertise in property laws. So, I can be here to advise the committee, answer their legal questions, but the committee itself has to have some of this expertise. It is normal and customary to try and find folks who are familiar with local zoning issues, ordinances, why they are what they are, land use issues within the community. Oh, I apologize. Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll slow down from here on out. So this committee has certain enumerated duties. And what I should stress is, in addition to these being their duties, this is also the limit of their responsibilities. This is not a committee that takes over any broader discretion. They have a specific purpose of going through these responsibilities to advise the board. First, they've got to review projected enrollment and other data. The statute goes on, lists various other kinds of data and then says whatever else the committee thinks is relevant data. So we state it broadly. Data is provided by the district to determine the amount of surplus space and real property. And again, that's their first mandate, whether the, whether it's really surplus or whether the district needs or should be making use of it. B, establish a priority list of use of surplus space and real property. That will be acceptable to the community. And again, that's a quote from the statute. What we notice is again and again, the statutes come back to saying, we're trying to find out what the broader community wants to do with this space. C, circulate a priority list of surplus space and real property and have public hearings to gather community input on the acceptable use of space and real property. This goes back to, you know, again, coupled with, A, it's the committee's job to take in all of the information that they think is relevant, including enrollment data, including demographic data, including budgetary data on the efficiency of use of existing sites and empty sites. And then also to hear from the broader community to be sure that they really do this job of reflecting a broad view. D, they make a final determination, and this is again from the statute, of limits of tolerance of use of space and real property. And again, that's the limits of tolerance by the broader community that they're there to represent. And then they forward to the governing board a report recommending uses of surplus space and real property. That's the culmination of their job. And then it's back in your hands. So the quick summary is, the board appoints members. The membership should represent the whole community and also be comprised of members of specified groups and representative of certain expertise. Then the committee takes in all the relevant data and public input to determine what's surplus and how best it should be used by the district. They make a recommendation to the board. It is in the board's hand to vote to accept the recommendations or reject them and then move forward through a further process that goes beyond, depending on the results of this, that is outside my engagement at this point. That's it.
Are there any clarification questions or basic process questions that the board wants to ask before we go out to public comment?
I had a quick question. How, how do the committee members hear from the community?
They would hold hearings and listen to the verbal input of community members. Now, I'll, I'll say this, there's also nothing, you know, the statute again is solicitous of that broad community opinion. So there's certainly nothing to, to prevent the committee from soliciting and reviewing, you know, letters or notes or any other information that they want to, to try and be sure that they're, that they're reaching out and getting that broad community perspective.
So they can take written, written community input as well as?
They certainly can.
But it's mandated that they have to have public hearings?
Yes, exactly.
Right?
Yeah, I have a question in regard to the compromise of members representing the specific groups. Obviously, the first one and the second one, like the ethnic age group, the business community, the landowners or renters, teachers and administrators and parents, none of those have to be experts. However, the last item says a person with expertise in property laws. So if we were not able to have a volunteer that had an expertise in property law, are we required to find that person and/or pay for that person's expertise like you would like an expert witness on a thing? Or like if you, it seems like they should all be pretty easy to find, except do you have a problem finding someone with that type of expertise?
We have never had, I've never been involved in a committee that had to pay anybody to participate. And I, I'm not, that's a novel question. I'm not even sure it would be appropriate. We always manage to find somebody. I will say this, when, it is typical when you start off that within, within any school district, within the, the community that the school district serves, there are so many people who are, if we're, if we're being honest, paying attention to what the school district is doing. And they see that this is going on and they may say, hey, I'm interested in serving. If we can't check all the boxes, sometimes we need to reach out and try to find somebody with the expertise who's willing to volunteer to serve. I've, I've never seen a failure to achieve that, but sometimes that's a step we have to take.
Quick process question, the, the public hearings, the, the process list in terms of the way that the duties were listed? It looks like that the public hearings come after the committee has decided, has come up with the list of surplus space, then, then they have the public hearings?
Well, I tell you what, the statute just lists these as their responsibilities and they're not in a chronological order. So one, one of the things I've been asked to do is to, you know, answer questions that the committee might have. And that would be one they might have. At which point do we start holding public hearings? And the answer would be, well, when you feel like you've gotten enough information and data that you feel familiar with, you know, the district's composition, its general needs, and you have some basis to make sense of public input, then you have your public hearings. You know, you touched on another issue, which, you know, sort of an implicit question is, you know, how long does this process take? And the, the true and honest answer is, it takes as long as the committee needs to feel like they've gathered the information requisite to make the recommendations to the board. So, you know, again, you know, but how long these things take ranges widely. So I wouldn't presume in this case what it would be.
And quickly, you had mentioned something like limits of tolerance.
That's right out of the statute, I know.
And could you just put a little definition around that or English, what, what you have seen that mean?
Sure, I, here's, here's the way that I interpret that. And this is having worked for schools and colleges now for 15 years. Again, there's a certain portion of the community that pays attention to and cares about what their school district is doing. And it's not just parents. I've got kids who are now in the high school district. They're out of the K-8 district they went through. But I live across from one of the schools. I still care what the school district is doing. And people who care about their schools often have strong opinions and strong feelings about what should be going on. And so part of the committee's job is to find how to thread that needle of what's tolerable to the community to do with these school sites.
Thanks. Any other clarification questions on this?
I just had one last question. In terms of meetings, the people who serve on this committee are, I know when I served on a Measure A committee for Measure A funds, I was able to participate remotely when I needed to. Is this something that if somebody was going to volunteer on this, would they be able to participate remotely? Or do you require them to be in person for this?
Well, I tell you what, that's in flux and it's kind of up to the legislature. So the, the 7-Eleven Committee has to follow the Brown Act requirements. For a long time, the Brown Act was very, very, very strict and narrow about remote participation. It used to be that a member of one of these public boards, like this board, could participate remotely, but there had to be an agenda posted there, the location had to be known to the public and the public had to have access to that location. During COVID, the statutes changed. And I, forgive me for punting, but there's, there's still flux around that. We hear from Sacramento all the time, they're still trying to balance whether they want to go back or whether they want to allow sort of a permanent, you know, remote facility. So we'll see, but the answer is we'll comply with the Brown Act.
All right, I'm looking, looking at my colleagues to see. Again, we'll bring it back afterwards if there aren't any. But if there aren't any other clarification questions, then we can go ahead and look out for, okay. Do we have Teresa the public comment? All right, so we'll go ahead and have public comment. Well, three minutes, oh, we got one more here. Thanks. All right, I will go ahead and do my shuffling of the public comment. And then we'll just, we've got five people. So I'll just go ahead and call you up to the podium. All right, this is the, this is going to be the order of it. You can stay sitting because there's, there's five of you. So, but just to let you know where you're going to be in the order. We have Sharon Segar, Lisa Kanan, Heidi Tomsky, Bob Davison and Carl Brown. So Sharon, if you want to come up, and we'll do three minutes at the podium, three minutes of public comment. Okay, I'm gonna see if we can have a time keeper. Can you do that again? Thank you so much. Lisa Kanan? Hold on one second, let me make sure that Rachel's got her time. We'll do three minutes and we'll do what we've normally done before, which is 30 seconds, so 30 seconds before two minutes, two and a half minutes, you'll hear an alarm and that'll be your signal to go ahead and wrap it up with the last 30 seconds. Ready? Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
All right, with no disrespect to Mr. Chastain, I'm just questioning, wondering where has the discussion happened? Where you have asked the question about whether you need to hire a law firm to run a public process like a 7-Eleven committee? Whether you have checked with other neighboring districts, many of whom have run 7-Eleven committees? I'm not aware locally that this is the norm. I'm wondering whether you have talked to MCOE about resources that they have used? And this seems, I have participated, we have all participated in many public processes, getting input on many big things in this district. And sometimes have used outside facilitators, but not law firms. So I'm wondering what about this particular process is so unique? Much of this stuff is pretty boilerplate. You can get it with a Google search. So I'm still troubled by where a decision and how a decision was made. I understand you feel like there are resource limitations on your staff and you can't run it yourself like every other district. And that's okay, but it's adding a lot of expense that then I think is going to be used to justify charging more money to sell this property on top of an already expensive assessment on a property that cannot be fair market valued. The other thing is about a different issue, I didn't, I didn't comment during communications. It's my understanding that there is a memo from the Children's Center Attorney that was sent to you yesterday morning and then afternoon, earlier than other things that were posted to the communications that have not been posted. And I certainly hope that before the next meeting, those things are posted because they're important public documents to understand your, an alternate argument to your lawyer's proposition that the property cannot be transferred legally. So I certainly hope those documents are going to show up for the public to see.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to Heidi Tomsky.
Thank you very much.
Very much, yeah.
Translation is not accurate, so we need to make sure it's accurate so that our fans of the speaker party can also receive the right information.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Ready, Heidi?
Ready. I would just, I hope this is the appropriate process. I want to resubmit the communication that I sent to you all yesterday. Because I'm reviewing it, I, something happened to the formatting and it's out of order. So I wanted, do I give that to Teresa or how do I submit that?
Yeah, you can just, you can just give it to Teresa.
Okay, I want to do that, sorry about that. And just disregard the other one. I've attached the memo and the, and the communication again. And I also just want to say, I really appreciate your consult, your thoughts and your concerns regarding the experience of the audience that has been here participating in many of these meetings. And I just want to share my thoughts with what has been happening because I know we've had, as we like to say in the preschool classroom, big feelings occurring in here with everybody participating. And I, I believe that one of the things that's going on is that many of these audience members are carrying hundreds of years of oppression in their bodies. And so they're being triggered by the discussions. And I, I don't believe that any of the discussions that are coming off the table are intentionally triggering people, that that's not what you're meaning to say to have that reaction. But I think that that is part of what's happening. And it's just a very sensitive subject for people who have lived an oppressed life and as has their ancestors. So thank you very much, and I'll give these to Teresa.
Thank you, Heidi. Sharon? Sharon Segar?
So I was just curious, a couple of things. I wondered how the facilitation of the 7-Eleven committee process happens? Is there some kind of an outline that you go over? Like, is there an educational meeting? Does the committee determine what they need? And then who's responsible for collecting that information for that committee? Also, you haven't talked about how people will apply for the process and whether there will be a meeting to determine who serves on that committee that will be a public meeting. Also, I was just curious what progress has been made since the last meeting and whether you've been able to contact the city of Nevada to see how they managed their $1 sale since they're another public entity? And whether the 7-Eleven committee will be a translate, translated also like these meetings are so that it's accessible to the community who cares so much about this process and what happens? So just a few more questions about how the whole 7-Eleven committee would work and whether, I know it's a Brown Act committee, but can it be run in the way that that committee determines? Like in a workshop format or other things? So, thank you.
Thank you. And Bob Davison?
All right, good evening. My name is Bob Davison and is, as, excuse me, I've said before, I've lived in Marin for a long, long time, 35 years across the street from the lower campus at Brookside. And I've been a big supporter of public education, including this district, for a long time. But I am really worried and frankly upset by the tone of your conversations, which seem to be mainly concerned with your personal liability at making some technical error or some perceived problem that results from your decisions about moving this facility to the children's center where it belongs. The fact of the matter is, I and other members of the community, taxpayers, spend more than $140,000 every year providing liability insurance for you and members of the staff of the district. $140,000. This is the policy. It's 45 pages long and it is a multimillion dollar liability policy, which is called a Directors and Officers Errors and Omissions Policy, which covers you to make the right decision. Secondly, I think you need to be a little more honest about what you can do and what triggers this risk. and what triggers this risk. One of the things that you mentioned was that the roads going into the school didn't meet the 20-foot standard proposed by some technical regulations pertaining to fire safety. The fact of the matter is, you built a multimillion-dollar, many, many-month project across the street from my house. That road is 13 feet wide. Not 20, 13, which is a hell of a lot less than any of the roads going into the children's center. Nobody talks about that. But you clearly made the decision that it was either something you could mitigate or something that didn't matter. And I'd like a little more attention to the fact that you can actually do something, given the fact that your liability is negligible, and that you clearly have the ability to make exceptions to some of these technical kind of rules. The only other thing I'd like to mention quickly is about the appraisal. The appraisal is supposed to come up with what's called the highest and best use of the property. This is not Ring Mountain, where there are 43 parcels for multi-zillion-dollar houses. This is a very limited-use project. And I would suggest the highest and best use of this property is what it's being used for now, that it affects the education and the values of our community. And I'd like for you to use some moral judgment in making these decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Carl? Carl, are you, there you go. Thanks, Carl. Come on up. Hi.
Carl Brown, board member at the children's center. Thanks for joining us.
Is your microphone on? Just make sure we can, you're being recorded. There you go. Thanks.
Thanks, Bryce, for joining us today. As you were explaining the 7-Eleven committee, which is something I'm learning about, you know, I just took note of the fact that you have a lot of experience doing this, it sounds like, but yet couldn't really create a timeline for how long this process would take. And I wonder if the board, hearing that from our hired facilitator, would reconsider the resolution that was just recently passed, which did put a very finite timeline on this process. I think it is worth noting that we have the expert in the room saying that there's just really no way to determine how long this process will take. Yet, we've been given an eviction notice, you know, for, if we're not able to get through this process, that ultimately, we don't have a lot of control in. So I just wanted to kind of provide some voice to that and ask you to reconsider that resolution that was passed. And I wanted to echo another comment that I heard, just asking for transparency around the 7-Eleven committee application process. I guess I would encourage there to be a public posting and clear instructions on how to apply and how to participate. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and bring the discussion back to the board. This is a, this is a discussion with, we've had the information part. We've collected information. So now we have a discussion, and we do have a vote that is needed on this to approve the scope of work and the not to exceed up to the $44,000 to manage the process. So bringing it back in terms of discussion, if there's any further discussion about anything that we've heard tonight.
I'm actually also interested in learning more about the application process to see how that's going to work. That I think is something of interest for me. And you have three minutes to answer.
Well, I'm going to gather from some of the comments that I heard that there is concern with the timing. But, you know, from my perspective, I'm here at square one. And the statute doesn't require, and there's no regulations that require, give us requirements or guidance on how you select. And so usually, the driver is, can you fill the required slots? And that can break either way. If you have lots of people showing interest, then we need to come up with a way to sort of sort through. And my only guidance on that would be, be sure we come back to the statute and that we're honoring the intent, you know, for broad community representation and broad, you know, demographic representation and some expertise so that, you know, we make sure that we're doing what the statutes ask us to do. And we could do that with interviews. There are a number of ways to do that. Usually, the issue is not finding enough people to check all the boxes, and then we're out trying to recruit. So again, I'm here at square one, and I'll be working, I think, rapidly and intensively with Chris and Marcy. And we'll see where we are, and we'll come up with a proposal to do it.
That process will be one of the first things that we do if this is approved this evening. That will be one of our first tasks, is to work on that process.
What I'll say too is, keep in mind that it is the board that impaneles these folks. So, you know, the administration will be coming back to you with a slate of folks and an explanation, here's how we got to this. Here's who threw their hat in the ring. Here's the expertise we needed to go look for, the representation that we needed to go look for. Here's how we came up with this. So they're going to lay that out for you, and you'll exercise your judgment too in deciding, you know, whether to accept that slate or say, you know, we'd like you to do it a little bit differently and, you know, come back again. It's, again, it's in your judgment. And the only thrust we have is that legislative intent that we're really aiming at trying to, and it's hard to do with 11 people, encapsulate the whole community, right?
So does that mean that the staff from right, from now on, is going to review application and then is going to come back here for selection? Or what's the process between now and the selection of the 7-Eleven?
The normal process is that the administration goes through what they've got. And then they come back to you, and they explain a recommendation for a slate of committee members. But it is ultimately up to the board to decide. And the board could say, again, well, you know, we see these flaws in the process that you use.
Got it.
Please revise your slate and come back to us.
So it would come back here?
Yeah. It'll come back here.
Like in terms of transparency and all of that? It would come back here?
So we come back here, and we appoint this. We will appoint the slate in a public meeting. That's my understanding. So we do appoint the slate in a public meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
This is what was not completely clear to me. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing I was going to say in terms of the process and the length of time, for me, that's encouraging about it being able to be done expeditiously is unlike some other 7-Eleven committees that I've seen that are really starting at square one with no information, that we have actually collected, because of the months of information.
Probably have more names than we need, right?
We have, we're not starting from nothing in this process. That the staff has already collected a lot of information about the specific property that we're wanting to work with. So as far as that discovery process goes, I think we're starting with more information to move it along. I hear you. Right?
I was just going to say, and the goal of transparency, which I believe is very important, I'd like to just make sure that we maximize the outreach. I'd like to maximize every opportunity to make sure that we put the word out to the community that this is happening. I'd like to avoid any sense of pigeonholing the process. I think if there's a possibility to daylight, in every possible way, I think that that would be a very wise choice for us to do in this case.
Any other questions or?
So when we, when we are brought the list of the slate that you bring us, is that part of the public record? Is that something where the entire public will have the ability to see those names? So if somebody is up for that position on the committee, will it be in the public?
That is public.
Okay. So people will know ahead of time, and so we can hear about it, a public comment, if something happens?
Yes. That is public. That would all be public record.
Okay.
Anybody who is, you know, volunteering, you know, sending correspondence, I would like to be part of this. There's nothing in the Public Records Act that would shield that from disclosure. So that's all going to be public record. And ultimately, again, the committee itself operates under the Brown Act. So people serving on the committee will be known.
Okay. Thank you.
My question was really more about before the committee is set up. After the committee is set up, I trust the Brown Act and the process. After that, I was more clear. I was not super clear between now and when the 7-Eleven is set up. So I think now that helps clarifying. Decision will be made here. Got it.
And then Marcy, just with respect to the decision that's required tonight. This is under, we have a current contract. So this is a scope of work, and it's a time and materials for this particular project. And we're approving a time and materials up to the $44,000 under the contract.
Correct. Yes. Not to exceed this particular project.
Right.
Up to, not to exceed 44. If we, for whatever reason, even get close to that, as I mentioned at previous meeting, we'll be coming back and talking with you. Since we already have a contract with AALRR for other services that they provide the district, we already know how the billing works. It's really simple and clean. So we would know way far in advance if we were ever getting close to being at that max.
Now, I wanted to check my calendar to know when is the next board meeting? And is there a chance we can get a list to review at the next board meeting? I'm just kind of trying to make sure we are going quite fast on this one. If it's possible, I can't remember if the next meeting is in two weeks or in a month. Let me check. Hmm?
November 9. It's November 9.
Ah, okay.
The next board meeting is November 9. So there is a possibility that.
If it was like certain time, it's only two weeks, which is a bit short. But there's a possibility that November 9, we might be able to review that. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
And it's my, it's my hope, you know, as we are embarking on this process for a very, it was inspired by a very specific reason in terms of selling the Deer Park property. I know that under the, or from what I'm assuming, from what you've said, under the statute governing the 7-Eleven, the committee gets to choose what the committee wants to look at. And we can express that our intention in this process is specific to the Deer Park property as far as what we have, the information that we have. So it's my, I don't, I can't, we can't really dictate to the committee what they do because they have a certain amount of independence, is what I'm understanding. That you say they have a certain amount of independence to look at the district properties. But we can express our opinions about what we hope they focus on, given where this board is trying to move with that specific property.
That's exactly right. Was this, there we go. There? Oh, I got it closer. You're exactly right. So the first thing is, the committee is really independent. They're going to exercise their own independent judgment. And you're going to furnish them all the data that you, you know, that you think is relevant. They can ask for more data. And yes, of course, the board as a whole and individual members are as welcome as anyone else to say, here's what we, here's what we would like to do here. Here's what we would like to see. And you hit it on the nose. The committee considers that, and then they make their recommendations.
All right. Unless there's any further discussion, this is an action item. So we do need to take an action in order to go ahead and launch our scope of work project with AALRR.
So I want to make a motion to recommend the approval of a scope of work with our current law firm, Atkinson, Anderson, Loyar, Rude, and Romo, for time and material up to $44,000 for this project.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote. Marie?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Wonderful. The process continues to move forward, which I very much appreciate us continuing to move this process forward.
Looking forward to hear about it on November 9.
And we will do what we can to keep, bring it back here on November 9 to, again, continue to move this process forward and to keep the momentum going towards the direction that I think we are all moving together towards. So I appreciate that. All right. Thank you. And thank you all for your public comment. All right. Our next agenda item is item F2, which is the California School Dashboard Update. So we're going to be doing an update on our California School Dashboard presentation.
All right.
And I guess I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to call just a one- or two-minute recess. And if we could, for anybody who wants to go ahead and stay, go ahead and stay. But we're going to go ahead and keep moving on our agenda. So, thank you all for. Okay. We're going to continue on with our agenda tonight. And we are on item F2, which is the California School Dashboard Update. Who is that?
This will be Julia Wilcott, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Awesome. Thank you. So the California School Dashboard provides parents and educators with meaningful information on school and district process so that they can participate in decisions to improve student learning. And tonight, we are presenting the.
I'm just going to ask if we could move any discussions outside of the room because we do have very sensitive microphones. So, anybody else? Okay. Go ahead.
Tonight, just presenting the local indicators, and of which we have five. And for the most part, the way in which we determine progress towards those local indicators is through a self-assessment. And I have provided in the board docs details of the narrative and the ratings that provide a lot of information. But just briefly, those five priorities. The first is appropriately assigned teachers, access to curriculum, and safe, clean, and functional school facilities. And we have met this priority. And one of the ways that we indicate that is through the Williams requirements. For priority two, implementation of state standards. Of course, we measure our progress towards standards with the annual state assessments, the CASP, as well as local assessments. And in fact, this year, we are implementing a new assessment management system that holds all of our local assessment curriculum within it. So teachers are just getting going on this. We actually had a meeting on Monday that, I don't know, my microphone's going on and off. It just does that, I guess. Okay. Where teachers just learned a little bit more about how to use the program. But it is holding data from our elementary mathematics program. So every assessment that they give students, they're able to enter that data into the system. And then it comes up in terms of not how many points they earned, but rather where they are in terms of the actual standard. So it gives, at a glance, really good, specific information so that we're able to support our students in the ways that they need support. And then, and we have met this priority as well. And then priority three is parent and family engagement. And I know that we've done a lot this year in bringing our families in. Our, we have our racial equity parent task force. And all of our sites also have site-level racial equity task forces or DEI groups that they are talking with, along with, of course, our site councils and our parent clubs and superintendents chats and all of those other groups that we have available to us. And then priority six is school climate. And this will be our second year administering our new survey from Panorama Education. And we found that to be tremendously useful last year. And look forward to, now that we have a baseline, getting those results and really being able to take actions aligned with those results. And then the final priority, priority seven, is access to a broad course of study. And that's just really ensuring that every child has access to their core content along with all of those rich programs that we offer. Art and music and physical education, special education, English language support, and whatever it is that they need, intervention support. And we have also met our priority seven indicator. And that is really it for our dashboard update this evening. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
I have one quick question. How's the, how are the local indicators reported out? I'm familiar with the dashboard and the CASP reporting that goes through the state and then they have a public dashboard for those. How do the local indicators get reported out?
They show up in the site plans where principals work with their site council to look at data together. And so often, they'll show up there. And then also, the system that we're using prints individual reports for teachers to use with parents. So they'll be using some of those reports within their conferences. And we do now have, like, principals are able to see all of the data within their school. And our MTSS teams are able to look at that data and make decisions about what kinds of supports are needed, how to put groups together of students who are, who have the same needs.
I just want to say, I really, I appreciate the depth of feedback loops that this provides and the additional social emotional context that wraps around the academic data and the regular CASP data on, that I think most, most schools, I don't know how many schools do this level of depth of additional kind of self-reflective. So I really appreciate that it's both at a school level, at a class level, and that it's also a tool for a teacher to use. So that kind of multiple use and just really appreciate the thought going into this.
Thank you.
All right. On to item number three, which is recommended adoption of resolution 082223, the establishment of criteria for order of layoff and re-employment following layoff of certificated employees with same first date of paid service in a probationary position.
All right, and that's me. So annually, we update seniority lists in the event that we ever have to do a layoff. And in the certificated service, as what often happens is, a number of employees have the same first paid date in probationary status because their first paid date is typically the first day that all of the certificated employees return to work. So as an example, what we need to do then is we have to break that tie, if you will, because there has to be a seniority determined. And so I've used, and you've all approved historically in this district for over 20 years, the same exact criteria. And as our school populations have changed, as our needs have changed in the district, I thought it was time to take a look at the criteria. I've streamlined it. One of the elements of the prior criteria had, where, and this new criteria has the same, where you, an individual unit member would get points related to their prior years of experience to joining the school district, as well as the number of credentials that they hold. And then another one of the categories added those two together again. So basically, we're double counting. It doesn't change in terms of the number of total points or who gets more seniority, but it seemed like an added step in the process of needing to count something that we've already counted again through the process. And then the other one is we've historically utilized Spanish as the language that is most needed in the school district. But as our student populations have changed, I'm wanting to expand the type of a credential that a teacher may hold or unit member may hold, as an example, that there are other types of B-clad or bilingual language acquisition development certifications other than Spanish. And we find value, I find value, in the ability of any of our teachers to have a second language. And so we'd like to give credit for that, too. So the criteria before you tonight is the revised criteria. And then if you approve it, I will be going and applying that to developing or finalizing this seniority list for the 22, 23 school year. And in the event that even through the implementation of the criteria, that two unit members or more end up with the same total number of points, we need to have a system in place that would break that tie. And so in that event, I'm making a suggestion that we do not change at all the process that we've used, which is a lottery. And as we've historically done, Union President and I would conduct the lottery together to determine a breaking of the tie. And so not recommending a change at all to that process. We would continue that. So just streamlining the criteria, tightening it up a little bit more and making it at the same time, a little bit more expansive to reflect the changes in our school district.
I want to go and ask for questions, but I'm also going to recognize that we only have one member of the public who is still here with us this evening. So I was realizing that on the last conversation, I didn't go out for public comment. And that's because I looked out into the crowd for public comment. And since we have just one person here, it was clear that we didn't have public comment. But I, whoever's listening, if you're listening, that's why I didn't have public comment. So, any questions? And no public comment on this one? All right. This is designated action item, where we actually do have to take a vote on it. So I will entertain.
I recommend we adopt the board resolution 082223 to establish criteria for determining seniority among certificated employees who first rendered probationary service to the district on the same date pursuant to ed code 44955.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion and a second. Rachel?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. And we have a order of layoff and we'll be getting the, the use of that back to us at a future meeting.
A later date, yes. Typically, if we are not going to be doing any layoffs, we don't bring the seniority list back to the board in that case. And I don't anticipate that we will be, but there is a lot of time between now and March. But I do not anticipate the need for that.
Great. All right, item number four is recommended approval of Board Bylaw 9270, which is a conflict of interest and adoption, which is a, approval of the board by law relating to conflict of interest and adoption of resolution 072223, exhibit 9270. Again, the conflict of interest.
Right, and this is the State Political Reform Act requires that all public agencies adopt a conflict of interest code. Our school district has done that in accordance with that requirement. And the last time that you all did approve a conflict of interest code was November of 2020. And annually, when that, every other year is coming up, we're required to submit something that makes a statement whether or not we need to update our code. So as we knew that we have had positions, as an example, in our prior conflict of interest code, we had a position in the district called Director of Human Resources. And as we all know, we do not have a Director of Human Resources anymore. That position has been subsumed by myself, Julia, and Chris Carson, as well as we added some duties and responsibilities to Lori Ross and updated, upgraded that position to HR Coordinator. And then the other position that we no longer have in the district right now is a middle school assistant principal. And so with that, it is a requirement that we update the positions that are required to go through the conflict of interest. And so that does include all of you trustees still. And then as listed on the resolution, in the appendix, is the list of all the positions that are now in the district that are required to submit a conflict of interest. There's no change to the board bylaw 9270. What you do need to do, though, is as part of this process, is even if there isn't a change to that board bylaw, you still must review and approve. And so there is no suggested revision at all. But again, tonight, you are being asked to make a recommendation, or sorry, I'm making the recommendation. Do you approve the update of the board bylaw, which for all it will be is just a change of date? And then for the resolution, is updating the positions that are required?
So, so the action item then has two parts to it. One is approval of the board bylaws and the second is the adoption of the resolution for, which is the exhibit.
Correct.
Thanks.
Does that require two votes?
It is listed in one item. I would recommend approval of one or the other. If a motion is to approve one part of it and not the other, then that's how it would go forward. We do have a deadline, so if it's not approved tonight, we do have a deadline that it must be forwarded to the county board of supervisors no later than December 30th, 2022. So if it isn't approved this evening, we have plenty of time to come back. And these aren't a list of the persons in the positions. These are a listing of the positions. So that are designated, designated positions and disclosure categories.
So we can do it under one motion, except if somebody doesn't want to do both, then it would be two.
It's a very technical resolution, so I'm just digesting. I didn't really have time to look at it before. Sorry about that.
Sorry. Yes. Uh, no public comment. Thank you. No public comment. I was just waiting to make sure everybody was ready for resolution, that's all.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. I'll go ahead and move the item.
I'll go ahead in a second.
All right, motion and a second. Wesley?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and that concludes our presentation action items for this evening. And we move on then to consent items. We have nine consent items on our consent agenda this evening. Is there any board member who has a, has a question or needs any further discussion or clarification on any of the consent items? And again, I'm not seeing any public comment or any issues with that, so.
Am I, is there any public comment? No, we don't. I make a motion to approve the content actions, the way they are stated here.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion and a second for consent. Marie?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
All right, moving on to board business for committee updates and reports from trustees. Who would like to start?
You want to talk about JIPA, Marcy?
Yes, absolutely. I can do that now, or I can wait until superintendent and cabinet updates.
Yeah, we can do it then.
Okay. Okay, you're going to wait, do JIPA, superintendent, cabinet? Okay. So Wesley, you were, you were, you went to the JIPA, but we'll wait for that. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure that's fine.
I attended the roundtable discussion. So that, the roundtable discussion, I don't know if you were going to do those...
But you can go and I'll...
I'll just do a really short one, you can do more of it. But I attended the roundtable discussion, which is the coming together of all of the PTA presidents, co-presidents, treasurers, and there were some site council or just PTA?
It's parent club, site council, YES Foundation, principals, and then Chris and myself.
And board trustee, who was you? Um, I was there. And I, the big, what I want to let everybody know, it was a phenomenal meeting. So I sat in on some of the very first roundtable discussions on our, or some of the early roundtable discussions when I was PTA president at Manor School. And that was in the early days. So the purpose of the roundtable is for all of the parent teacher club, parent organizations on campuses to come to an agreement around how they do fundraising and how they spend money. And the idea is to have parity among the campuses so that you don't have one campus raising a gazillion dollars and another campus not being able to raise money, or having all of the parent clubs going to the same businesses over and over and over in different ways. So it's around coordinating their efforts, coordinating. And part of that got into very technical agreements around how much spending per student could each club have? And if they raised more, they had overages and round and round and round it went. This meeting was fantastic because the interest in working together and collaborating, they even went so far as starting to talk about having one parent organization for...
Can I say hallelujah?
What?
I can say hallelujah to that one. I've been pitching this one for years.
Yeah.
The fact that it's even being talked about, it's, it's good to know.
So this was, this was, I believe this was one of the first, they were, this is where that conversation started. And the engagement of all of the people there was very high engagement, support and enthusiasm. I mean, there's nuts and bolts for them to work out, but they were volunteering to be on committees to work this out and the direction and just the spirit, French, what, joie de vie, whatever, the, the spirit of camaraderie and working together. And also the conversation that they were having around equity and around understanding how to support the overall district goals and how to support the equity issues and initiatives and services on the campuses was also part of the conversation. So it was, I just was like, it was a fantastic conversation.
It was. And so since you did such a great job of summarizing, just let me add one other word in there, inclusivity and community building. And they would like to, as parent clubs, spend their time focused on how to build inclusivity and community within their schools and not spend as much time focused so heavily on the fundraising aspect. And what was really beautiful, if I can just add one more thing I just thought of, is that the wanting to work in relation and in community with the YES Foundation as well so that it was, that everybody is aligned and moving in the same direction. And what was most striking to me and just absolutely an amazing outcome of the day as this came directly from the parents. This started with them talking about this in the meeting. It was part of what I was going to be presenting and talking about, but they got there. They were there before I had to even talk about it. And their complete interest and understanding of how the integration and the interconnectedness between the YES Foundation, the programs that the YES Foundation funds for the district, how critical they are with art and music, and then also with the site base needs that the parent clubs are responsible for raising and ensuring that each child at the school site has more than just the art and music, but the activities, the feeling of community and that it is, each school is in and of itself a community, but not separate and distinct from all of the schools in our school district. And so it was just, it was an amazing, it was beautiful.
I just want to comment that that is a massive shift from when I first got on this board. There was an aspect of tribalism in this district when it came to, between the various elementary campuses. And it sounds like that has disappeared, which is really wonderful to hear.
Thank you. I'm really pleased with the direction we're going.
And along, want my other report out along, somewhat along that theme, at an even broader level, at the countywide level. So I'm on the efficiency and effectiveness school board team that is facilitated by the Marin County Office of Education. So that is all of the districts, the school board members from a lot of the districts coming together and talking also, very similar type of conversation around shared services and how districts can work together in terms of shared services and being efficient and collaborative, working together. And that committee, I've, I've been in and out of, of those meetings probably for the past, I don't know, three or four years in various roles. And that committee also seems to be picking up some concrete tangible steam. It kind of had an era where it was very busy and then it kind of went nascent for a while and it's, it's picked up again and has, there's a, a list that's going to be produced of all, like, two pages worth of different kinds of shared services that districts are, were looking at and how many districts are working together. Most of them are through services that are provided by the county office of education, but just the idea of districts working together. So, along that theme. And I did also participate in the Parent Guardian Equity Task Force, which also had a phenomenal meeting, but I'm not going to steal anybody else's thunder because I'm going to let you guys, the staff who is there, say more about that.
I think, I think it's great, though, to hear from you as a trustee participating on these. I think, go ahead. Talk about how you feel about it, what... Talk about how you feel about it, what your experience was there. Go ahead and we'll add in.
All right. So this was another meeting that had a dramatic shift in, in, um, working relationships and the tone. And it was, again, very heartwarming, inspirational and encouraging to see this group of people coming together. There was a lot of new people, which was wonderful to see, that it's continuing on with some new parents and guardians involved. And that some of the, it's a challenging issue, courageous conversations. And what I heard was that some of those difficult conversations with parents and principals had happened and everybody hung in there and stayed together, working on difficult issues and emerged the other side stronger than before in a very positive way. And so a lot of that work is really getting anchored in the schools and in the classrooms and that there are committees on every campus and that the principals are working directly with all the parents and the different parent groups on their site on projects and getting it, getting the work into the classroom. And it's rolling out, it's happening and the parents are really engaged. And I think the biggest part was just, I don't know how many years of just this kind of forming, um, group coming together and then, and working through some of the difficult issues of having some conversations that were very emotional and raw and challenging and, and being able to have those conversations between parents and administration. So to see them hang in there with each other and then to feel so good about it afterwards was very inspiring for me to know that like, I feel like all of a sudden you kind of hit that hockey stick, you know, where it's just gonna take off now because of those working relationships. And Julia, do you have anything you'd like to add now?
Yeah. I, I thought it was really an incredible meeting and a lovely testament to just all of the hard work that everyone, you know, the, the parents and guardians, along with the administrative team have been doing and really impressed, as you say, Shelley, by how people just hung in with each other during those hard conversations. We know that work around race is, is really the hardest work that we, that we do and, and how important that is. And I think that this goal that we've had of getting it closer to the classroom, meaning having it really impact our students, um, we're, we're really making steps towards that. And it's wonderful to see parents working collaboratively, collaboratively with their site principals and teachers and other staff, um, doing the work right there on sites and really doing work around inclusivity and creating welcoming schools that where every person feels like they belong.
Did you? Yeah, I was just gonna want to add one more thing. The, the word that kept coming back in that meeting was belonging, which I, they were feeling like, when having conversations around race and, you know, I'm doing air quote equity with kids, using the, the idea of belonging and everybody feeling like they belong there and, and reaching out to each other to create that sense of belonging on campuses was the word that really resonated as a way of describing and talking about it. And then the other part was that there was a subcommittee formed about, um, as a board, us almost catching up with the action with respect to our board policies. And so I'm sure some of you are aware that some other school districts have adopted equity policies as a board. Lot of other districts use that process as a launching point off to kind of move the process along. Our district kind of launched off and created an equity mission statement and has an action plan and it's all moving forward. And so now our role is gonna be to help, um, recognize and acknowledge that work by creating a board policy. And what that will do is it will anchor all of that work in place for when we are not here and when those parents are not here and when there's, as time moves on, so that it just becomes part of the district. And that's the purpose of a board policy, is, is to codify and to put something in place. So that'll be coming back to us. I'm not quite sure what timing, but there was a subcommittee that was formed, so we'll have some engagement around that coming up in the future.
And I want to thank Julia for our main lead with our racial equity work and really appreciate Deborah McKnight, our, our coach and facilitator for working with us and getting through this process. And of course, as has been mentioned, for our parents and guardians who have been with us since we formed our Parent Guardian Equity Task Force, to stay with us and engaged because we are serious, we are moving forward, we're making differences, we're making changes in our schools and it's critically important, not just for our students of color, but for all of our students. We all benefit by diversity and by inclusion and knowing how and to ensure that every person feels included. It is the best way to, if we think about the best learning that a child can have, it's when they're feeling safe. And nobody learns if they're not feeling safe. And so when you have, whether it might be, um, English isn't your first language, when you might feel that you're not welcome in the classroom, it makes it really difficult to learn. So that inclusivity, that sense of belonging is absolutely critical. And I think our classrooms have always been, but knowing and hearing directly from our families and our children directly is how our schools are impacting them is what matters. And then paying attention, of course, to how they're performing. So we're working on breaking down the barriers so that all children have the ability to achieve their full potential, and all children. And we all benefit from diversity. And so that's our goal and that's our mission. We're working toward ensuring that our racial equity mission statement comes to fruition. And our board policy that we'll be working on in subcommittee is just one of those elements that'll help to, as you mentioned, codify the work that we're doing. And so really happy again in our progress that we've been able to make in the committee and, or on the task force and looking forward to seeing a day where all of our subgroups, populations of our students are able to perform at the same level as each other, not just on the panorama, panorama surveys, but also in our local and our statewide assessments.
That's, that was a short update. Thank you.
I actually attended, um, I was at the Parent Equity Guardian Meeting. I'm tired today. It was great. You guys have already gone over that, but I just wanted to mention that we worked on the REAP, which is the Racial Equity Action Plan. So we were making specific adjustments to that, like 2.0, I guess, from last year. And about making changes in the classrooms with a focus on creating the welcoming environment, but also having a goal of like school-related activities, making them accessible for all of our students. So those were specifics that were discussed. But yes, the tone was just an amazing shift from when I joined a year ago. And even Deborah McKnight was like, wow, you, you've got a big, big delta between when you started and when I've, you know, where our last meeting was. I also went to the YES Board Meeting. They voted in three new board members. We got board update, our program updates from the art teacher. Ms. D is at the elementary. She said that they're focusing on social emotional learning and a year-long focus on collaboration in their artwork. They're working on large-scale mural identities, inclusion, kindness, perseverance and art making. They're bringing in more artists of color for the students to study, Hispanic, Latinx, specifically for Heritage Month. White Hill students are doing studio art, some of them, and they're doing altered books and digital art and photo samples. Some of the art is in Red Hill in rotation right now, so that out, that's been updated. So I know that's always fun when your kid's stuff is in there. And then they are bringing back Night, which is great. And they're trying to do a slightly different model that's a little more inclusive and able to have more families at each site, which I know when I first started with my, my son, when he was little, it was like everyone was racing to cry and sign up because it was such a great event to go to. And so now they're trying to open it up to more people, which I think is, that's probably a really good idea. They did some professional development, seeking out museum educator events that feature artists of color in curriculum. There was, um, an art night and they'll, or the art night, it's moving, I guess, to the multipurpose rooms. So teachers will have a lesson planned, designed, they'll get supply list ready. I think they're looking at the second week of November for the, um, for the parent family or the family art nights. So they're gonna try and coordinate with the fundraising campaign to have, hey, you're doing art and this is amazing and it's also funded by YES. For music, Pete Santucci talked about a little bit of the restructuring of the staff this year. They hired just one new teacher and kind of shifted around the teachers that we already had. And so Ms. Smith has taken over for orchestra at White Hill. And so she did a professional development and, for teachers in Ohio and said that was just really rewarding. And they're also focusing on Hispanic heritage music and dancing and using instruments this month. Let's see. As far as theater, they're finishing the, they're finishing the fourth week of the White Hill production now and the kids are doing something that's a really unique play. And it's a little different than the past. They went to, um, it, it, the format of it is different. It's hard to explain. Basically, it's kind of a choose your own adventure sort of play is how it was described to me, but it was also, um, they, they'd spent a lot of time figuring out what kind of script to pick and it's going really well, I guess. Wade Thomas in Manor should be starting up theirs soon. And then there is like an update on the finances. They are estimating $975,000 for family giving. And so that is their current, at least as of, Marcy might have more recent update numbers on that. And family giving is at 13% right now, which is about in line where we were for last year. And then we got a district equity, uh, sorry, an equity update from Sue, because she is on both committees as well. And so she just talked about what they're doing, how they're trying to listen to families to learn more, to see where harm may have occurred in the BIPOC and LGBTQ community in the past. And they're trying to fix, fix what they've done in the past and try and correct harm and acknowledge it. Specifically in theater, they're trying to create an inclusive and diverse script selection process involving a committee. So they're reviewing scripts for the upcoming year and they're having a specific eye on that, a little less Disney, a little bit more looking at other options as far as theater. And then, um, they're, they're working on anti-racist goals, I think, for their, their whole program, program. So those are the main things. And I might've missed something, so Marcy can fill that in.
I did not attend that meeting. Yeah. I will be attending the one this Thursday though, and I do just have an update from Chelsea is one of the elements that they've been working on too in terms of ensuring that all students have access to participate in their, the after-school plays or the YES play, uh, program, is that there is a scholarship program and it would include also, a full scholarship would include for parent volunteerism. So in the event that a child wants to participate in their family, isn't able to do the volunteer hours, that part would be waived under the scholarship process. And they have a number of the scholarships available. They haven't ever met the max that they can give from those. And so we talked about ways and we'll be talking at this, next week's administrative team with the principals around how to ensure that if there are children who would like to participate in the play, that they can help those families know that there are other scholarships available, so that no child is not able to participate in the play, but let me put it in a positive, that they're all able to participate in the plays if they want to. And they, even though they have their cap on the total number of children who can participate, they've never needed to turn any students away, at least as long as Chelsea can remember. She's been in the district at least five years. And so that's also good too, in terms of the access that all children have.
Any other committee updates?
J-LAC.
Ah, J-LAC.
So, um, it's been a long day, because J-LAC was this morning. And I was just looking at it now and of course I'm losing my document here. So I have a few notes and, um, in general, I kind of summarized them, but I didn't have time, I was there today. So I'm just going to read you a couple of extract of what was discussed this morning. So I just want to, to, um, iterate the fact that the governor did, did take action on some bills in the last month. So in case you missed the memo, he signed on AB 2295, which is around teacher housing. So I think this is a topic of interest and that's, that's one that I encourage you to, to hear about, to read about that. It might impact us at some point or not and it will certainly impact some of our neighborhood districts. I do, uh, I do want to point this out that as a county, this is something of interest and MCOE has been very active in, um, uh, being a leader in making sure that we are indeed as a county providing and being interested in providing, um, some, uh, some housing for the teachers. So that, that's a good topic, so keep an eye on that. And I'm, I'm glad that passed, because I think this is going to be, that might be a game changer. Another one that passed that was really controversial and we didn't really, we're not so excited about it, but it passed, is the one called Buy American Food Act. And this is, this is where varies, um, this is one of those bills coming from more from the inland of, of California where there is a push for the food that we are serving our kids to come from mainly, you know, essentially come from, from, from California, whether they're coming from overseas. So there is a lot of, um, uh, politic behind this one. Pushing and kind of promoting the fact that we should buy local. There is a threshold for, there is an exemption for districts that are smaller and that, that may, uh, may be exempt from, from that obligation. So that, this is, this is a new bill that has been approved and we are all looking into that to see how that's going to turn out. This, this can be very pricey for, for, for districts, obviously, as we need to buy local and therefore more expensive. So this is something we are digesting and to see how that's going to impact all of us. Another one I was thinking is, um, of interest, at least interest to me, was around, yeah, we talked about the fact that, um, I heard a lot of cautious this morning from, from our lawyers in Sacramento saying, let's be careful about the next budget cycle. It is not going to be so, um, so, um, uh, generous as last year. So there is a lot of word of cautious about, yeah, there was a lot of thing on the table right now, but don't over commit if you don't have the money, be careful, don't, be, be very careful. There is a lot of, of, of that, that is, I, I, I found the, the tone very different from last year around the, the, the fact that there would be more money coming. So I'm just going to read the sentence here. The governor's veto messages use a consistent refrain. With our state facing lower than expected revenues over the first few months of this fiscal year, it is important to remain disciplined when it comes to spending, particularly spending that is ongoing. Okay? And there is more to that and I will send you that tomorrow in writing, but this is was definitely a tone that I think has been on the fiscal side of the house, that was something important to me. And, um, and something to pay attention to, election is around the corner and one of the, uh, one of the, uh, item on the ballot is Prop 28, which is the measure on arts and music education. So something to pay attention to. We'll talk more depending on the outcome of, of, um, of education, of, of that, of that, of that, um, of that measure, but that will also impact what, what do we, um, we already have some money for some of what would be on, on that, on that prop. So this, this, what they were recommending is, um, don't over commit to spend your art and music money early in the year. Take your time, place, put your placeholder there and wait for that bill to pass or that, that, that measure to pass to kind of figure out where you will lend your money. So that was interesting, say, hey, plan to spend, but, um, wait to see if they, that money could be coming from one source versus another one. So that was quite interesting here. And, um, and something to look forward for the issues on the horizon of what is still going to happen, what is going to come back in the next session is, uh, one of the favorite one is around the home-to-school transportation. It seemed that I'm, I'm a broken record on that one, but that there is definitely appetite to bring that back. This is still a topic, so we're going to hear more about this one. So I'm going to keep bringing back those, uh, those information to you as this is, um, it keeps being amended, it keeps being, uh, coming back in different fashion. So the home-to-school transportation, um, this is something that I'm, I'm going to come back and give you more information about this year. And that was a long day, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Thanks for the heads up on the state level. What's coming, what's coming from us, what's coming from the state? Anything else? All right. Uh, no public comment and we'll move on to. Uh, no public comment and we'll move on to H2, which is approval of the special meeting minutes for October 3rd. And I believe we were all at that meeting. So are there any edits or anything that we have to that?
I make a motion to approve the, the minutes from the special meeting for October 3, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion and a second. Marie?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
All right, superintendent and cabinet report. I think we've probably covered half of it or some of it. So what, what do you have left?
I think we'll have a solid talk left. My microphone's not working. Eric Stable, Director of Student Services.
All right. We'll be having our first ELAC meeting of the year next Wednesday, the 19th, 6:00 PM via Zoom. So we're super excited to really just talk about what's going on in our schools. And then again, resources and other supports that we can provide to our English learners and their families. Very fired up about that. Also too, the wheels are in motion to put together a wellness committee. We do have board policy guiding us on that. It needs some updating, but I'm going to be talking with local districts, including TAM district, about how they've put these committees together. And I'll be, you know, working with my colleagues in cabinet as well to really, you know, get a good plan in place because this is important, an important thought space that we want to make sure is up and running. We also are, the wheels are in motion for the middle school to implement the co-vitality wellness screener. And this through the University of California, Santa Barbara in partnership with MCOE. And we're one of, I think, three districts that are piloting it in the county. It'll be for all sixth graders. And it's, we're really excited about it because the, the idea is that it's a strength-based assessment, if you will, or, or survey that, that is giving data back to the team on how broad indicators and also down to the individual level. And there'll be parent communication, obviously before that happens. But I attended a training with co-principal Baker and social worker Autumn Arbery just yesterday. As part of my role too, I'm checking in on students that we, in special ed have placed in other programs that are more appropriate, that provide more intensive support. Our MCOE classrooms include the Olive Elementary Campus in Novato, the Compass Campus in Novato, Basic School and our very own wonderful Manor School. And I'm also chipping away at visits to different non-public schools where we have students placed. Because again, any placement outside of the district, we're always looking to see, hey, is it, is it time as this student made enough progress to where we can get him back? And, and sometimes even we'll do like a hybrid schedule where they might attend part of the day at a district school and still be in part of the program at their, at their non-public school placement. So that's all really great to build the relationships with those teams because they're a part of serving our kids. And we had a wonderful special ed team meeting Wednesday, the 28th. We had a training from our wonderful special ed attorney, Deborah Edinger from AALRR, talking about how we're ensuring least restrictive environment for our students, doing quality assessments, progress monitoring, et cetera. It's a really great team. They're working so hard. And we're also, fingers crossed, going to be able to fill some gaps in staffing. And so that's been, there's, there's good news, I think, on the whole. So hopefully by the next time this board comes back together, all those spots will be filled and I'll be all smiles. And for now, that's it from Student Services.
Thank you, Eric. And Chris Carson, chiefness is official.
So mine will be short, I promise. As you know, I'm a number person, so keep this number in mind, 235. I just wanted to say congratulations to the employees recognized again this evening, all the new hires and also all of the milestones. And coming back to that 235, that is the total number of years, if you add up everybody on the milestones that they've given to the district. And that's, goes back to children and the reason that we're here. And this is a special place. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. And Julia Walcott?
Yeah. So Monday was a staff professional development day and it was a really successful day. At the elementary level, we started the day at Hidden Valley and broke into grade level groups. And each of those groups went through a little bit more exploration of culturally responsive teaching and what that looks like. We did a little reading of Zaretta Hammond, who's one of the authors that really has done so much work around culturally responsive teaching and also how that kind of is influenced by the brain and how the brain functions. Talked about different levels of culture and differences between things like collectivism and individualism and how, how kids enter a classroom and what their needs are and how those needs are based in their culture and how the spaces that we have traditionally had within our schools have been spaces that are more individualistic and more centered around whiteness. And had really good, rich discussions about what it looks like when you are creating more space for all of your students. And then after that, teachers were able to choose between a number of offerings just to, the, the theme was time and support. So we're doing a lot, we've asked a lot of our teachers and wanting to give them just the time and support to take things deeper. So we did a deeper dive in forefront, the assessment management system that I mentioned earlier. We also have a assessment management system that also holds assessments in it. You can use it to actually give the assessments, called ESGI and our TKK. And first grade teachers use that one. So there was a training there. We're looking right now at, we've been trying for years to land on the right word study program for third through fifth grade. And so we're going to be piloting a program and there was a group of teachers that met around that. We had lots of teachers sign up to just spend time diving into those social justice book bundles and aligning them with their curriculum, with their history curriculum, language arts curriculum, also alignment with the heritage months that we recognize. And then I got to run a mathematics problem solving session, which was really fun and just provided a lot of resources for teachers that they can use within their classrooms and that builds on the work that we did in August with Von Nguyen, the math coach that we have become so fond of. And then at the middle school level, total kudos to Mary Claire and John, our co-principals who ran their day. They also spent most of the morning on culturally responsive teaching. They did a great protocol called the EMR protocol, where you're looking, having teachers look at their list of kids and determining which kids, do they just need to maintain a relationship because they know those kids well? Which kids do they not know that well and they really need to establish a relationship? And is there any restorative work that needs to happen, meaning the R? And then they took that and spent some time looking at different strategies for building trust and relationship. And so had to bring that into the classroom. And also spent some other time working on, within instructional teams and using strategies that just are culturally responsive to students. And then in the afternoon, and Marcy and Eric and I all joined them for this, they had a training from the SPAR Center on LGBTQ plus safety, equity and identity affirmation. It was a fabulous training and one that we planned to bring to our elementary schools as well. They actually were kind of right before COVID, there was a training for all of our elementary staff. But what we keep finding is that we've done so much work that we are ready for even these same trainings. They go so much more deep and just are, are really resonating with all of us. We had this morning, our third MTSS team meeting of the year. This is a small group of folk. It is our intervention teachers, our EL teachers, our MTSS partner coaches, myself, Eric. Often a principal comes by and it's a really action oriented team. And so today we spent a lot of time determining curriculum for our EL students at all different levels, those who are well along in their language development and also those who are newcomers. And we are going to be using a dyslexia screener called DIBELS, which we'll have for, for intervention, but we're going to screen every second grader in the district. And this is in alignment with what's coming from the state. Very likely soon, districts will be required to have a K2 dyslexia screener. So we're, we're trying to be ahead of the game and get ready for that. And, and are really curious what that full screening, that universal screening will, will surface for us. And we already talked about the equity work. I think we're good there and hiring recruitment, we're still busy. It's still really challenging to find staff and we're having to be super creative in terms of reaching out to organizations, trying to drum up applicants. Eric is amazing in terms of these agencies that he's working with, trying to fill his very, very important positions. I feel like I get an email every day saying, I found one, which is wonderful. But it really is challenging. It's a challenging time for staffing. We still have a PE opening at our elementary, which we are hoping to fill. We have some leads. Well, two PE openings. Yeah. Good point. And that's it for me.
Yeah, certainly with the hiring cycle, it's all year round now. It's not, you know, we're not filling positions in the spring for the fall. It's all year round and we've been seeing that for a few years, but it's more challenging now. And we're going later and later into the school year. So want to thank Julia and Eric for the work that you're doing to outreach to all of the agencies and programs and really try to drum up folks who are interested and will apply. And we've come close, but because so many districts have some of the same positions open, we're holding an interview, but someone's beating us to it. So, but we'll keep plugging away. We'll get them filled. And I do want to thank Eric tonight for providing interpretation for the earlier part of the meeting. Yeah, thank you very much for doing that. Our regular service provider, even though I was able to, I contacted them over two weeks ago regarding tonight's meeting, they were just unable to fill it. They said that there are a lot of other school districts and public agencies that have or entities that have meetings on Wednesdays. And the after hours time of the meeting poses difficulty for them. But we'll keep working on it and I'll just keep getting the request in really early. But thank you, Eric, so very much. And also just to go to one of the committees that Wesley also attended back to JIPA is, that is the executive, joint executive powers authority, I think is what JIPA stands for. And go ahead, Wesley. Is that right? Yeah. Okay. And so it's our yellow bus program. And so they did a review of the lottery system that they held, the number of passes that they've been able to sell for White Hill and for Hidden Valley, and then the number of students on waitlist. So the full price this year is $515. The income qualified price is 100, so it's 20% of that full price. They sold 519 passes for White Hill, 72 for Hidden Valley. And then there are a number of students on the waitlist. And the, there are no waitlists for the morning. It's all in the afternoon. The bus route that seems to be the most desired is the San Anselmo hub for the students who have afternoon activities. So they're wanting to get to the hub. And this year, they, they have fewer this year on the waitlist. The buses are running at more at full capacity, back up to, they're running at about 50. They're maintaining the seat right behind the bus driver is vacant. And so that does take off two seats. For the younger kids, the Hidden Valley students, they can fit more students on the bus in capacity. But they have a total of, for the White Hill nine, which is a San Anselmo hub, this year they have 19 students waitlisted for the Memorial Park, 32. And for the Red Hill Avenue via Butterfield, so they go down via Butterfield and then go back out. They have 22 this year. They did transpose the number on the slide, but they corrected that during the meeting. They did end up with, after a very careful analysis of what the cost would be, and this is what we did in our spring meeting, was to determine the budget. They do believe that they will end up with approximately 22,000 in surplus. And so that will be factored in. But they do believe that because there was also an increased added contingency for fuel, just given the high fuel cost. And so that was a big amount that was put into the budget. And then the town of San Anselmo, the town of Fairfax, each gave 35,500 to the system. And Marin County, the county as a whole gave 100,000. So another cost comes, I think, is that Wesley, the cost out of Measure A? Or does Measure A put more into it?
No. That is. This is about 200,000, between 220,000 that comes out of Measure A, which also funds safe routes at school. I think the county's contribution to the budget is about 100. The number one contributor to the budget are our parents and guardians who are paying the lion's share or more than half of the costs of Michael's transportation.
That is true. Yes. So those contributions to the budget do help. But as Wesley said, the lion's share is the parents paying for their children's bus passes.
Despite the fact that parents are willing to pay it, five buses are run and there is demand for a sixth bus at three o'clock leaving White Hill. But the overall cost to run that sixth bus, sixth bus would, is about $100,000. So it, right now, I'm over there and my wife is over there. So we're seeing what it's like around three o'clock. There are a lot of kids who are riding bikes and some of them are riding e-bikes. And some of the e-bikes have more than one rider on them. It's really quite a scene over there. And once it gets cold and the days are shorter and it gets wetter and people aren't riding their bikes, I think we're going to hear stuff from our constituency on, on what's going on in terms of the bus program. The other thing to take in consideration, that was my last JIPA meeting. So they'll need to, when we do committee assignments in, in December, there'll be an opening if anyone wants to attend these meetings. But one of the things that's going to be a challenge, I think, is that Michael's Transportation, who's the current vendor, the three-year contract is up. So I'm not, hopefully they'll continue to agree to support us. But there's always a possibility that either the, the numbers will be too high or that they might not want to contract with, with the county going forward. But we'll just have to wait and see. I think have, I think running the buses is critical. I think everybody on JIPA believes that it's critical. It's just a classic situation where there's not enough money to, to adequately fund the bus program.
Thank you. And the last thing will be one of the items that we talked about that we don't know what the impact actually is, is that White Hill and Hidden Valley this year end school at the same time. And so as Wesley mentioned, with the number of students who are interested in afternoon bus, another aspect of it is, and they're going to be doing some research and letting us know at our next meeting, which is in February, is what might the impact on the bus program be if the schools were to have a more staggered starting and ending time? And so is there an impact? What does that mean? They mentioned it. I asked the question, what does it mean then? If we were to go back to a different starting and ending time? if we were to go back to a different starting and ending time? I will talk to the principals about that just to get it on their radar so that when we hear back in February that there might be a potential benefit to the bus system itself, that we're ready to have more robust conversations and decisions about start and end times.
Just logistically, the afternoon is different because we have zero hour in the morning. So five buses can serve our, our student population because some of the buses turn around and go back and pick up the kids who aren't doing zero hour. While there are late buses, and some of the buses do circle back to White Hill, the five buses do circle back, the time of departure is anywhere between 35 minutes and 45 minutes after school is out. And the kids oftentimes have other, they either need to get to after-school programs, sporting events.